Thank you very much. So I'd now like to call to order this committee the whole meeting of May 22, 2025. At this point in time on this agenda, put out a call for any declarations of interest. Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to business. We don't have business, no business arising from the minutes. Okay, so we have a delegation. We have Mr. De Mello of Kagan, Shastree, and De Mello, Weiner, Park Lawyers. Well, that's a long one. With regards to P D R C W twenty eight twenty five, known as Thornbury Acres County Official Plan Amendment twenty five final report. Okay, and there he is online. So welcome, Mr. De Mello, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Warden, members of council. First of all, I'll take back the note that the name is quite long and it's a mouthful. We usually just shorten it, but I appreciate that. With regards to delegation, I had advised that my role was really to be here today to answer any questions. I'm counsel for Thornberry Acres in connection with this matter. And I had provided a correspondence to members of the Committee of Hole and Council, indicating that we are in support of the staff recommendation report and appreciate the work that the staff, county staff, has done to move this matter forward. This is part of an overall application that council will be aware of that our client is bringing brought forward a private application for residential farm cooperative. And that this is a OP, an official plan amendment, in our view is a very technical one, that allows for the special agricultural component of the lands that are designated special agricultural to continue to be used for agriculture as part of the residential farm cooperative. It won't change the use on the subject lands that are resident, that are special agricultural. They'll continue to be used for agricultural lands as part of the overall development. But it's a technical amendment that allows them to be brought in. So I'm here to indicate support and I'm also here to answer any questions that may arise and that any members of council may have. And thank, once again, would thank staff and would thank council for the opportunity.
Okay, so I'll see if there are any questions. And I not seen a, oh, yes, I have one here online. We'll go to councillor Boardon.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning, County Council. Through the warden to the deputant, what are the plans for the actual operations of the farm cooperative? I'm still, I'm still a little gray on that area.
Through you, Madam Warden, to the member of councillor Boardon. The farm will be managed by a professional farm cooperative. All of the residents who will be unit holders within the farm cooperative are also required to be operators within the farm. It'll be a collective farm that is operated on the subject lands. The residential component of the residential farm cooperative has been designed in such a way that it integrates well, integrates with the farm. It keeps the special agricultural lands separate so that they can continue to be farmed. It adds additional agricultural lands for the farming operation. The operation is as the, as the, as the OP definition of a residential farm cooperative provides that it is a cooperatively held farm. So it's not individual lots or individual plots of a farm that are used. So it's not like a garden plot. It's an overall large operating single farm, but it's going to be operated and managed by all of the owners. All of the owners who are going to be in the complex will be active in the participation of the farm. And there will be a professional farm manager that will be trying to make sure that the farm operations are consistent with best agricultural practices.
If I could just follow up. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Warden. So it's, 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 so people buying three to five million dollar houses are going to be doing farming. And is that in, that's first question I have. And the second question is that, is that in the deed? Is that deeded if people move, move forward on they're required to do farming?
Through, through you, Madam Warden, to the council, those are going to be the details that are provided in the plan of condominium, because this is going to operate by way of plan of condominium. So there will be, there will be the contributions, there will be the requirements uptake the farm, there will be active participation in the farm. Some members, of course, will be more active than others in terms of participation, but all of it is associated with the farm operation.
Is there any further follow up, councillor Boardon?
No, thank you, Madam Warden.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, and I confirm, I don't see any further hands online nor here in the chamber. So thank you very much, Mr. De Mello. And we will continue with our next item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we'll move on to item five, which is determination of items requiring separate discussion. And there are five different items listed on the consent agenda today. So I'll put out a call to ask if anybody would like any of the items in six pulled, six A through E. Okay, just give a moment for people to check their notes. Not seen any hands so far. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm not seeing any hands. So therefore, I'll put out that it is recommended that the following consent items be received and that staff be authorized to take action necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May I ask for a mover? Moved by councillor Dobreen, seconded by councillor Greg on the floor for discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll ask all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. Let's through then to section seven. And items for discussion. So the first one we have, we'll be looking to Director Spicer for this one. So I'll just get it on the floor first. The recommendation is that County of Gray budget and finance committee meeting minutes dated May thirteenth, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolution be contained therein be endorsed. That report F R B F C O nine two five titled County of Gray twenty twenty four Audit Services Service Plan Report to the members of council dated April tenth, prepared by M N P L L P Chartered Professional Accountants be received for information. May ask for a mover. Okay, so it's moved by councillor Dickert and it's seconded by councillor Pringle. So it's now on the floor for discussion. Good morning, Director Spicer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. At our meeting, we start with a little preamble. So at the February twentieth meeting, staff sought input from the committee regarding the tenure capital process. And committee members advised that they'd like a clearer understanding of the decision making process that would support more informed decisions and spending justifications. So based on that, Kim and I asked departments that would be making capital presentations to the committee to include things like an overview of their capital assets, what criteria they use to determine the need for a capital investment. So whether that's using asset management plan obligations, level of service, criteria, condition indexes, links to other capital projects, et cetera, what sources of funding that you have. How are projects tracked or prioritized over the tenure plan? Is there a software used and what is the methodology? Is there current investment shortfall or any big investments coming in the near future? And how do they calculate their cost estimates in years one to five and six to ten, which acknowledges the further out a project is, the less refined is the cost. And thanks to Pat and his team, Transportation Services volunteered to be the first department to present to the committee. Sean Anthony, who was the operations manager, he presented, discussed a number of things, including the types and quantity and machinery of their fleet, where the facilities are and how many, their staffing. Talked about the fleet manual that was prepared in 2022. It was attached to the agenda for the meeting for reference. There was recommendations that were discussed from the study with a good discussion on electric vehicles. Committee was provided an overview of how equipment is funded, which is through the sale of equipment and chargeout rates based on usage and how the budget is calculated, which is using most recent purchases and two percent inflation. Also discussed transfers to reserve, reserve balances, how they use the building condition assessments for depots. And they have dome inspections that are conducted using a firm that specializes in that type of unique structure. And we also discussed the transfer to reserve and the anticipated reserve balance for at the end of the year. Then we moved on to Trevor, the engineering manager. So he presented an overview of the capital engineering budget. So based on the twenty twenty three AMP, committee heard that the replacement value of road structures in stormwater is almost one point nine billion dollars. And he talked about the tools that they use, including IRIS, which is the ability to drive around and do the assessment on roads using the software pavement condition indexes, talked about geometrics of roads, what adjustments might be done when a work is done, how traffic volumes and the type of traffic influence project prioritization and pavement performance. Talked about funding sources, which are DCs, grants, reserves and levy. And that projections included two percent annual inflation increase and a two point five five asset management plan increase. And just as a note that in our budget, we allocate the full asset management plan to the transportation budget because the bulk of our assets are infrastructure. They discussed structures, which provided that the average replacement cost per structure is two point three million dollars. Trevor also discussed how the budget is determined. So they take a two percent inflation to the previous year's levy and add the asset management plan increase. Tenure capital, we talked about years one and two, cost estimates are based on designs that staff have prepared, consultant cost estimates, using average pricing from previous years contracts adjusted for quantities. Years three to five is using a cost per kilometer adjusted annually based on construction costs. Year six to ten use the same math methodology as years three and five. Projects are identified based on project projected condition and adjusted annually. We also discuss PCI as well as what preventative work can be done in order to maximize the lifespan of roads. And then the last part of the agenda was a staff report that had the twenty twenty four M N P Audit Service Plan attached. So our manager of accounting, Garrett Reed, presented the report. And it was noted that the document from M N P, which is the auditor's mechanism to communicate with council was later than normal. And that's, of course, because of the change from the local office being BDO office to M N P. Our field work was finished in late April and the audited financial statements are expected to be presented at the June twenty fifth Budget and Finance Committee. And also scheduled for that meeting are a few other reports, including departmental presentations by IT, planning and paramedic services.
Okay, thank you very much for that introduction. So with that, then we'll put it out to committee, the whole members, if they have questions or comments. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands go up. All right, then it has been moved and seconded. If there is no further discussion, then I'll call the question then. All those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Director Spicer. Next, we'll look to Director Taylor, who is going to be online with us this morning. So I'll read out the recommended motion, that report for item seven B. That report P D R C W twenty eight twenty five be received and that all written and oral submissions of on the official plan amendment number twenty five were considered and helped to make an informed recommendation and decision. And that proposed county official plan amendment number twenty five to permit the re designation of lands designated rural special agricultural and hazard lands to rural special agricultural with exceptions and hazard lands designations on lands legally described as part of lot twenty seven concession eight in the geographic township of Collingwood, now in the town of Blue Mountains be supported and a bylaw to adopt the official, the county official plan amendment be prepared for consideration by county council. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Moved by councillor Keveney, seconded by councillor Eccles. It's now on the floor for discussion. Good morning, Director Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning to you and members of council here this morning. I am just going to share my screen here because I have a brief presentation. I apologize I couldn't be there with you in person, but we still have lots of good planning content for you to consider today. So, Madam Warden, could you just confirm that you can see the presentation that's up on the screen there now?
We can. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so I think council is well aware of the Thornberry Acres development. So I'm just going to take you through a very brief recap, just for those that might be tuning in today that might not be as familiar with with the development as council and also explain the relationship of official plan amendment number twenty five to the rest of the development. So what you see on the screen there, that is the subject lands highlighted in red. They are at the southeast corner of the intersection of Gray Road forty and Gray Road two. The lands are approximately sixty one hectares in size. And I would just draw your attention to, to sort of the cleared lands in the northeast corner. And those will be the lands that are most directly subject to official plan amendment number twenty five. The subject lands are sort of southeast of Thornbury and west of the Georgian Bay Club Golf Course and Development in that regard. So with respect to official plan amendment number twenty five, it is a site specific amendment to, to consider an exception to the county's special agricultural lands, as Mr. De Mello told us about. Within this exception, it would allow the lands to be used in concert with the residential farm cooperative. But the special agricultural lands, which are about nine point eight hectares in the northeast of the development, cannot be used for either residential development and/or for any of the associated infrastructure with the residential farm the proposed residential farm cooperative, including any stormwater management ponds in that regard. Council will be aware, as Mr. De Mello noted, I believe, that there are some other applications associated with this development, including a planted condominium application, a zoning bylaw amendment application, and a town official plan amendment application. And those are all currently before the Ontario Land Tribunal. So this proposed development has evolved over time. And more recently, there's been a, some significant changes to development, including a reduction in the number of residential units proposed. Previously, there was thirty seven units. Now there are thirty one units. Some of the proposed residential units have been shifted to the west of the development to allow for more lands to be preserved for farm and forestry uses. The removal, there's been a removal of a proposed stormwater management pond in the special agricultural lands in the northeast of the development. And there's further been a reduction in the overall number of entrances for the proposed condominium roads onto our county roads in that regard. And so what you see before you there is the current official plan, official plan designations for the property. What you're seeing in white there is the rural designation and what you're seeing in, in sort of hatched orange and red in the northeast of the development is the approximate nine point eight hectares of special agricultural lands. With respect to the proposed development, what you see before you is, is the previous planted condominium that was proposed. What you'll note is, is there are the thirty seven units here. What's not showing on this plan is that previously there was going to be a proposed stormwater management pond in the, in the northeast of the development. You'll see that there are some of the units proposed in, in the southeast of development. And that's important to note because that's one of the things that shifted through the new plan. You also note in, in the original proposal, there was a proposed entrance onto Gray Road two for a condominium road and a further proposed entrance onto Gray Road forty for a condominium road. What you see before you now is the current revised proposal that the developer is seeking approval on in front of the Ontario Land Tribunal. So as I mentioned, now you no longer have the residential units proposed in the southeast of the development. You have the residential units are pushed further west. There are thirty one units now as opposed to the, the proposed thirty seven units. They've eliminated the entrance onto Gray Road two and have a single access onto Gray Road forty for the proposed condominium road. And, and as stated earlier, there's no proposed stormwater management facility. And furthermore, the, the proposed official plan amendment, if approved, would restrict both any residential and/or stormwater management development in the specialized cultural lands, which are in the northeast of the development. So with respect to some additional background, we are here today to talk about the, the official plan amendment number twenty five. And that's what we're limiting our discussion here today. But I did want to note that the other three applications, the condominium, the zoning amendment, and the town official plan amendment are all scheduled to go to a two week Ontario Land Tribunal hearing to commence on July the seventh. The town of Blue Mountains remains concerned with this proposed development, including the revisions which took it to the thirty one unit proposal. Council may recall that they recently approved official plan amendment number twenty three, which updated the county's rural policies, including both the permitted uses and the development criteria. So O P A twenty three changed a number of these policies and uses, but I need to be a hundred percent clear that official plan amendment number twenty three does not apply to the Thornberry Acres development. The Thornberry Acres development preceded the county's commencement of official plan amendment number twenty three as such. It's, it's treated under the old policy. And furthermore, there's a site specific exception in official plan amendment number twenty three, which, which clarified that the Thornberry Acres development is under the old policy. This is important because the, the county official plan, as it read prior to official plan amendment number twenty three, had some, some different wording in it, including not defining residential farm cooperatives as a defined term. And that's something that's been amended through official plan amendment number twenty three in that regard. With respect to the comments we heard on, on official plan amendment number twenty five, which is the site specific Thornbury Acres development. I would note that the majority of these comments were received prior to the new thirty one unit proposal being presented. So some of these, these comments would have been relating to the former thirty seven unit proposal. The county did hear a mix of comments on this. Some of the, the agency comments simply noted that they had no further concerns. Some of the comments were received were more pertinent to the planted condominium application rather than the, the site specific details of the, the special agricultural exception proposed through official plan amendment number twenty five. There were, however, some concerns with respect to the number of residential units and the scale of development being proposed. There were concerns about the loss of both farmland and forested land on site. There was concern over whether or not the amount of housing being proposed was commensurate with the proposed farm production on site. There was comments received with respect to whether or not the county official plan policies had been fully addressed. And, and there was further concerns about whether or not this type of development would be precedent setting in that regard and/or whether this development would have impacts on neighbors, including neighboring farms. I will note that the developer's planner did provide a response matrix to these comments and that has been linked to in the report and, and shared on the county's website. Those that submitted comments were also made aware that this report was being brought forward at today's committee of the whole meeting. With respect to official plan amendment number twenty five itself, as I noted, it, it does only apply to the, the special agricultural lands in the northeast corner of the development. The provincial planning statement two thousand twenty four continues to reiterate the province's goals of providing protections to specialty crop lands, which is the provincial term for what we call our special agricultural lands. I would note that although O P A twenty five is considering site specific wording to the special agricultural lands, it would not weaken the production, the protection of those lands. And it would further reinforce that residential lot and unit creation isn't permitted on those lands. And neither is the stormwater infrastructure in that regard. As I noted earlier, in, in the county official plan, pre official plan amendment number twenty three, residential farm cooperative was not a defined term. Residential farm cooperatives are only permitted in the rural designation. And there is a policy in the rural designation that requires a minimum of sixty percent of the original land holding to remain available for active primary agricultural or recreational use. Official plan amendment number twenty five, if approved, again, would not allow any of those residential uses on the special agricultural lands. But what it would allow the developer to do would be to consider the specialized cultural lands in concert with the rural lands as part of their calculation for the total sixty one hectare site in terms of meeting that sixty percent calculation that I just specified above. The county official plan continues to direct most of our residential growth to, to our settlement areas, where we have both our services and amenities in that regard. And, and council has reaffirmed their commitment to directing our growth to settlement areas through, through the policies that were put in place in official plan amendment number twenty three. I will say that, that the Thornberry Acres development has been challenging. Staff remain conflicted about this development. Certainly, we would note that there were some improvements made through the changes in terms of reducing the total number of residential units, allowing for, for greater percentages or greater amounts of the lands to be used for farm or forestry purposes. But, but we do still remain conflicted there. There was a public comment with respect to whether or not a, a positive decision on O P A twenty five would be precedent setting. And certainly councils heard staff say this before, but each amendment or each planning application is always tested based on its own merits and based on the legislative and policy framework that's in place at the time that, that we're considering that policy application. So, so it's, it's not necessarily precedent setting, but certainly people could, could look at past decisions of council and, and ask questions in that regard. Staff still do have concerns with the number of residential units proposed through the, the overall development, but would note that that's not directly pertinent to the official plan amendment number twenty five in this regard. And then furthermore, based on the direction that was provided by county council on May eighth, there is merit in supporting official plan amendment number twenty five as a site specific amendment. And so with that, the warden read out the recommendation at the beginning, but basically the recommendation is that the report be received. Certainly, we thank all those that submitted comments on this application, both members of the public and agencies, and that the bylaw be prepared for the June twelfth county council session. And with that, I am going to stop sharing my screens and certainly happy to take any questions if council has any questions in that regard.
Thank you, Director Taylor, and we'll begin with councillor Boardon online.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and again, the county council. To, to Scott. I, this, I appreciate your comments on, on being conflicted. This is not sitting well within the T B M, which resides in Gray County. And we sit with our Gray County hats on. But this is not good for anybody in Gray County, hence the reason why O P A twenty three was introduced. So even though a loophole was found, and now it won't happen in the future, that's going to help this development. So I, I have a couple of questions for you. In that would not, and I know it's been discussed many times and through many reports, but by the sheer fact that we had to pass O P A twenty three, does that not lend any defense to saying, okay, you found a loophole, but we've closed that now because it's not a good idea? Does that not lend any, any merit to the negative of, I'm sorry, to the defense of this development not proceeding?
Thank you for your question, councillor Boardon, through the warden. I'll just have to be careful in my response here. And, and perhaps I should have said this to council at the beginning. We just need to make sure that what we're discussing today is, is directly pertinent to, to O P A twenty five and we're not getting into any of the, the existing applications. With respect to official plan amendment number twenty three, certainly the county official plan was passed in official plan, in, in two thousand nineteen, sorry. And as staff got to working with the policies and as we started to see development applications come in, there were some interpretation issues with the county official plan. Not just in any way as they relate to Thornberry Acres, but, but some of the rural uses in, in general. And so we sought to, to clarify that through official plan amendment number twenty three, and staff believe that we do have clearer policies in that regard. That said, the Thornberry Acres development preceded, preceded those policies and preceded the, the passing of O P A twenty three. So in, in terms of what county council is considering and what ultimately may be considered through the other applications in front of the Ontario Land Tribunal, it is the county official plan as it read prior to the passing of O P A twenty three. And so while it, it's a signal of council's intent in that regard and, and staff's direction to, to clarify those policies, it isn't directly pertinent, in, in my planning opinion, to official plan amendment number twenty five in that regard.
Thank you for that. Mister, may I have a follow up, Madam Warden?
Yes.
Thank you. And then in regards to, I know one of the major concessions was thirty seven to thirty one houses. Has the, has the footprint of those in the thirty one larger than the, the models that were proposed in thirty seven? Because looking at the site plan to myself, it would seem that we're just building bigger houses for a larger dollar value as opposed to, there may be less density, but the houses may be a larger footprint. Do you have any comments on that?
Through you, Madam Warden. We're starting to stray a little bit from official plan amendment number twenty five. I will say in general, the, the, the units have been compacted into, to the western portion of the site. And, and what's being proposed right now is, is the unit boundary. So it is proposed through a vacant land planted condominium. So we don't actually know how large those future homes may be in that regard. That would be to a certain extent up to the future buyers if this development were approved as to the size of the home. What we do know through the proposed revisions to the vacant land planted condominium is, is how large those, those, those. I'd like to say lots, but they're technically units would be in that regard. And I will say for council that generally speaking, when we're looking at, at, at lots or units in, in the rural area, the size of the lots or units need to be a little bit larger anyway to, to support the private wells and septics being proposed. to support the private wells and septics being proposed. But at this stage, we don't have any firm indication of what size the future homes would be on those lots or units, sorry.
Thank you. May I have one more question, Madam Warden? And I'll stay within the report. I don't want to put Mr. Taylor in a bad position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's in your report that surrounding land use includes agriculture, cannabis-growing facility, residential uses, golf course, and a space extensive commercial industrial uses for the surrounding land. In regards to the cannabis-growing facility, has the proponent, the OPA 25 will allow this residential to go in where it wouldn't have been before. Is there, with the cannabis-growing facility, there is sometimes odor or things like that coming from it. Is that something that the county or the town would be protected from if the, if this OPA 25 goes through and this is built, that they would be able to come back and say, well, we're not happy with that? How does this affect the surrounding areas, I guess would be the question to keep within the report?
Through you, Madam Warden. So the proponents' team has conducted studies to look at whether or not there'd be any nuisance between the cannabis-growing facility to the south and the proposed residential units in the vacant land plan of condominium, which would be to the north of that cannabis-growing facility. And so when you're looking at those, you look at things like odor, but also noise and light in that regard. And so those studies have been submitted, and those will be matters that the tribunal would be considering as part of their decision on the Thornbury Acres applications. And if there were to be a decision in the affirmative to approve those applications, there could be in the future draft plan conditions or site-specific zoning that implements the recommendations of those studies in that regard. But OPA 25, strictly speaking, doesn't directly relate to the cannabis facility because it's just looking at the exception on the special agricultural lands in the northeast in that regard, but I hope that helps clarify, Councillor Bordenjall.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the indulgence, Madam Warden.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just look to the room to see if there are any hands. Yes, we'll go to the Deputy Warden Mill.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Scott, for your comments. I guess with tongue firmly in cheek, I would say these latent farmers, I would hope, would not object to any normal farm practices because of the nature of being allowed to build their houses through OPA 25. So if the neighboring farmer decided to build a 3,000-head hog burn, I'm sure they'd be thrilled to see agriculture right on their doorstep. And if you'll, Madam Warden, if you'll allow me, it does bother me a little bit to call these homes farmers. It's disgraceful or disrespectful to the many real farmers in this county and across the province. And these people that are going to build these homes to call themselves farmers on a cooperative farm is absolute lunacy. And I commend, actually, Mr. DeMello, his ability to keep a straight face while he's giving his answers to the questions earlier. So with that.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Are there other comments? Yes, Councillor Echols.
Just a quick comment on page three of the report, halfway down, that gives a description of the property at the southeast corner of the intersection of Gray Road 2 and Gray Road 4. I know we've been talking about changing.
My apologies, Councillor Echols. I didn't mean to hit the button that early, but yes, that is a typo. It is County Road 40. Drive it on a regular basis. Okay, any other questions? Unless, sorry, Councillor Echols, was there anything else, or was it just that? Okay, my apologies. Councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, through you, and good morning. With regard to specialty crop, I looked up the definition, and it could include trees, apple trees, grapes, tomatoes. As an active, it's supposed to be an active farm where the residents are actively participating, could just be voting to harvest, or we don't know what active participation actually entails. But in looking at the map to keeping with the designate, the OPA 25, where is the farm entrance? If this is going to be actively farmed, where will the structures be located that would be associated with normal farm practice? And where will those farm equipment in order to access the farm be located? Because we've reduced the entrance to the residential development, but I don't see a farm entrance associated with the active farm. Thank you.
Director Taylor?
So through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your question, Councillor Dobrine. What you saw on the proposed plan in my staff report and in the presentation was simply the condominium, the proposed condominium plan, which shows the condominium roads. I'm just seeing if I can find the concept plan, but basically there is a proposed entrance off of Gray Road 40, and I apologize, Councillor Echols, for calling that Gray Road 4, which would be, you know, roughly most of the way to the east of the property, which would allow for that farm access. And if they were to have a farmer's market or something else there, it would allow for those types of access. So what you're seeing on the plan is the condominium road, but there is further a a plan that would show the farm access, if you will. But I apologize, I apologize, I don't have that for you today.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, and through you to Mr. Taylor. You mentioned a farmer's market. Will this specialty agricultural area then become parking and, or potentially become parking to accommodate a farmer's market? I guess I'm just trying to get my head around what special agriculture could entail. And my second question originally was if this is going to be an active farm practice, there is no indication that there would be any structures to, you know, a drive shed or storage?
Sorry, through you, Madam Warden. So what, again, what you're seeing, it's a good question. Thank you, Councillor Dobrine. What you're seeing is the proposed plan of condominium plan, and we've had some talk about the permitted uses. But essentially, through the county official plan, all the permitted uses that are currently permitted in special ags, that includes, you know, the growing crops, the raising of livestock, the ability to build farm buildings and such, would all continue to be permitted through this development application. And so in some of their original submission materials, the developer had proposed, you know, some types of uses that might be considered on these lands, including the types of farming that might be considered. But at the end of the day, that would be narrowed down if it gets approved as to whether or not they needed any barns or equipment buildings or the exact type of agricultural production that would be on-site. So neither that the county plan nor the implementing town zoning bylaw amendment would weigh in too heavily there beyond it's likely to include the full suite of uses that would otherwise be permitted in the special agricultural designation or similar zone or the rural designation or zones in that regard. So again, that includes both farming, but it also includes on-farm diversified uses or agricultural-related uses. And that's something that was also made clear in Official Plan Amendment Number 23, is that alongside uses like agriminiums or residential farm cooperatives, you could have those other supportive agricultural uses like ag-related uses or on-farm diversified uses.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Look all around the room for if there are other questions. Yes, we'll go to Councillor Carlton.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov. When I look at this layout, what occurs to me is, is there a future possibility for this condominium group to decide they don't want that special agricultural land and to vote to sell that off, and it's no longer part of this farming cooperative?
Director Taylor?
It's a good question, Councillor Carlton. Through you, Madam Warden. The developer has proposed, and through their legal representation, has proposed a series of tools that they believe will ensure that the lands both remain protected for farming and remain farmed in that regard. County staff have had some concerns with some of those protection models in the past. And again, we're straying a little bit through the discussion on Official Plan Amendment Number 25 as to whether or not we should consider this exception or not. But they have proposed tools that they recommend through the plan of condominium that, in their opinion, would guarantee these lands be used for farming in that regard. Should there ever be any further proposed subdivision of these lands, that would, of course, have to come back through the Town of Blue Mountains if it was via consent application or through the county if it was via further uses like a plan of condominium or a plan of subdivision in that regard?
Any follow-up, Councillor Carlton? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No comments? No, not seeing anything further in the room, not seeing anything further online. So I'll call the question now, all those in favor? Could you just keep your hands raised for a moment? Thank you. Okay, so I'm counting that as passed. Thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to, we will go on to 7C. So that is, Director Taylor, you've got a break for a moment there because we're going to go over to the clerk for this one. So it's recommended that report CCR CW 0625 regarding appointments to the Joint Municipal Services Committee be received and that the following members be appointed to the committee. And with that, I'll leave the list of names to Madam Clerk. Well, Madam Clerk, do you want to go through the names first before I look for the mover and the seconder?
Thank you and good morning, everyone. This report here before you today seeks membership, members to be appointed to the Joint Municipal Services Committee. The terms of reference were adopted by council in April, and note that the committee will consist of five members of county council. There have been a number of councillors that have expressed interest in sitting on this committee. We have several members to date that have, I know they'd like to sit on it, and we have five spots available. Those councillors are Councillors Hutchinson, Dickert, Pringle, Boddy, Dobrine, McKay, and Keveney. So from here, we can either proceed with an election if all members wish to have their names stand, or if there's anyone that's not necessarily interested in sitting on the committee, then they can ask to have their names removed, but those are the councillors that have expressed interest today.
Okay, thank you. So with that, then, I'll put it out then, if there's any change to that list. We've got a question from Councillor Dobrine.
Thank you. Tara, could you repeat the seven members that have indicated their interest? Councillors Boddy, Dickert, Dobrine, Hutchinson, Keveney, McKay, and Pringle.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll look at, we'll look to Councillor Bordenjall online.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you. Similar to other committees, is there any desire to change the TNR, the Terms of Reference, in relation to a seven-member panel? It's still a odd number because of the interest. It's joint services, so I don't see harm in that. But again, I just digress my question to the clerk through the warden.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Warden. Staff, I don't believe would have any concerns with adding two additional members to the committee. It would just require incorporating into the motion that the terms of reference be amended to add two additional members to reflect all these interested members.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Councillor Echols.
So I believe we set a precedent a few meetings ago that any committees that we had of committee of council required that there be a representative from all of the nine municipalities. So I'm going to suggest, if we're going to continue to follow with that, that we better have move it to nine. Because it influences the decisions of this, it's certainly going to influence every municipality. So in following the precedent that was set, that five individuals certainly couldn't represent, seven certainly couldn't represent, we better have a representative from all of them. So I would put a motion forward that we change the Terms of Reference and it be nine, a representative from every of the nine municipalities of Gray County.
Okay, is that a hand to second? Okay, so I'm just gonna, if you'll just allow me a moment, thank you, Councillor Echols, for moving, if you'll just allow me a moment just to look procedurally to the clerk first before I call for a seconder. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, and we don't currently have a motion on the floor. I would suggest that this is pertinent to the discussion and is in order. If there was a question about that, I just put my opinion on there, out there on that, and that we, it would be in order if council wishes to go that direction. I would just note, and I think Councillor Echols, you, just to confirm, the previous committees increases in membership were written into the Terms of Reference specifically for that committee. There was no decision on making all of our committees have representation from each municipality, but I understand your perspective on perhaps setting a precedent with those two that were done previously, so just wanted to note that for clarity.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'll put out a call, is there a seconder for Councillor Echols' motion? Okay, I've got it seconded by Councillor Dickert, so it's now on the floor for discussion to expand the membership to nine. Specifically, Councillor Echols had named that it would come from each of the municipalities. So it's on the floor for discussion. We'll begin with Councillor Nielsen, and then we'll go across the floor.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasov. And just in terms of the motion that's been presented, like the clerk said, I don't disagree with the merit of what Councillor Echols was bringing forward, and I understand why you're bringing forward the motion. What I would challenge is that in this circumstance, the premise of this committee is to review different municipal services that can exist. There's no direction from this committee to try to implement, there's no direction from this committee to try to suggest what services. This is an exploratory mission. I don't believe it needs nine members of this county to be a part of it. The information they're going to bring back will then be presented to all of county council. They'll have the opportunity to speak to the lower-tier municipalities, the staff people of those lower tiers to gain perspective as to what could happen. Because this is more of that exploratory information, the challenge of trying to get nine members' schedules onboard, the challenge of trying to find meeting times, I believe it would be more efficient and effective to have the five members, and so that's just my comments on your motion.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to go to Councillor Greg next, but Madam, perhaps Madam Deputy Clerk, could I just ask that the motion get read? I can't see it on a screen anywhere, just so that we're all clear on what we're discussing. And while that's being organized, we'll go to the next speaker, which is Councillor Greg.
Thank you, and I'll largely echo those comments of my colleague, Councillor Nielsen. Ahead, we had just five names come forward. We wouldn't have a subsequent motion, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I think if there was going to be consideration of this motion, the time to consider it was when we had the Terms of Reference brought forward a couple of meetings ago. I will be voting against it. Let's have an election. Nobody's feelings are hurt. If you're chosen, great. If you're not chosen, it's not the end of the world. The cost of governance in the last couple of years here is we have ballooned committee after committee after committee unnecessarily. The cost of governance in the last couple of years here is we have ballooned committee after committee after committee unnecessarily. And at the end of the day, you have to ask yourself, are you better off for it? And a bigger committee is not necessarily a better committee. So I will hold true to the five and hopefully we'll have a vote.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go over to Counselor Dobree.
Ditto. I echo my colleagues' comments. I did put my name forward in the hope that we would have representation from all quadrants of our county. I see that there are other representatives from the South Gray area and I am not in support of a 50% committee, as Counselor Nielsen suggested, this is exploration. If there was an opportunity for joint municipal services that would be explored and we might strike another committee to do a deep dive into that particular item, I would draw my name to make it easier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And before I go to further comments, I can see now that it is, what's written is, the moved and seconded motion is that the terms of reference be amended to reflect a membership of nine with membership from each municipality. So that's what we're discussing. Thank you, other comments? We'll go to Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov. I support the idea that we brought the terms of reference forward earlier with five. I would question if it's set in stone that those same five members stay on. So if something came up that involved two municipalities that were not represented, can we change the membership of the committee to facilitate dealing with what's in front of them at that time?
Okay, so I'll look to Madam Clerk. So would there be a possibility for resignation and admission of a new member?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Warden, yes, at any time. It would be within council's purview to change the structure of the committee. So it's kind of fluid in that regard and is flexible.
Okay, I'll look to the room to see if there's further discussion on this motion. Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands in terms of the motion presented by Counselor Echols and seconded by Counselor Dickert. So I'll call the question on that, all those in favor? Okay, I am seeing that this motion is defeated. Okay, so with that, we will, we'll look back to the recommended motion. We do have, Madam Clerk, now we've got, because we've heard from Counselor Dobree that she wishes to remove her name. So we now see it as we've got six names for five positions, correct? Okay, so we will need a motion on the floor. We didn't, I read it out, but we didn't have the names until then. And we better do an election first because otherwise we can't, we can't name the individuals until we know who those individuals are. Okay, oh yes, Deputy Ward Mill? Okay, we, yes, so that moved the motion. Madam Clerk, do you want a motion that we have hold an election or? She says we don't need a motion to hold the election. So hold your thought, we'll get to.
And go through each name individually, and members can vote up to a maximum of five. So the councillors interested are Councillors Boddy, Dickert, Hutchinson, Keveney, McKay and Pringle. So for votes for Councillor Boddy, please raise your hand. For Councillor Dickert. Councillor Hutchinson. Okay, that's, and Councillor Keveney. And Councillor McKay. And Councillor Pringle. Okay, just, I'll beg your indulgence momentarily while I go through boards.
We're just going to give the clerk a moment. Okay, Madam Clerk?
So the results of the election are Councillors Boddy, Dickert, Keveney, McKay, Pringle. So the next step from here would be a motion to appoint those members to the, to the committee and receive the report.
I was going to say that this is the most, you know, given all the elections that we go through in our lives, this has been a lovely and cordial election. So, okay, so the clerk has confirmed the five names that can be entered in. And then I had heard, then I'll just confirm, Deputy Warden, you are moving that? Okay, so it's moved and it's seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Dobree.
My apologies, could we see the names on the screen, please?
Okay, sorry, we've got several screens. I thought that was on the screen behind us. So, and I'll read, oh, okay, all right. So the following members be appointed to the committee and they are Councillor Boddy, Dickert, Keveney, McKay and Pringle. Okay, any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Mackey.
Could we have a recount, Madam Warden?
Okay, I'm hearing that that was just a suggestion. Okay, and not seeing any further hands up? Okay, I think we can call that vote then, all those in favor? Okay, that was carried. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for all those who put their names forward, willing to serve on this committee. And we appreciate everybody's input on the various different roles that we all play. So with that then, Madam Clerk, then should we perhaps, are you recommending we do a break or? Okay, I think we need a break until, we're at perfect timing. If we can do a 10-minute break and come back at 11:30, please. Thank you. Okay, County Council, if I can encourage you to return to your seats. Okay, so Madam Clerk, we've got our quorum present as everybody's gathering back into the chamber. And we are now going to move on to item 7D. And let me see, 7D and 7E, so I believe that's both CAO shirts, sir. And, okay, so with that then, shall I look for a mover for the first portion? CAO, or do you want to speak to it first and then look at the two together? For just bill five?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just begin with the recommendation that the information regarding bill five from the Legislative Assembly of Ontario be received for information. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Dobree, seconded by Counselor Kepke. So it's now on the floor for discussion and I'll look to CAO shirts, sir.
Great, thank you, Warden Matrasov.
So there's two bills that you'll see on the agenda today. And these have been introduced recently by the province, one being Bill 5, which is called Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act. And then Bill 17, as you'll see, which will be subsequent to this, this current one, To Protect Ontario by Building Faster and Smarter Act. Given the tight deadlines for common staff, we're unable to prepare staff reports regarding these two proposed bills. However, we wanted to add these two bills to the agenda to provide some highlights to council on what is being proposed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott to provide an overview of the two bills.
Great, thank you, CAO shirts, sir, and through you, Madam Warden. I am just going to share my screen one more time here. And just because I'm insecure, I'll ask for someone's indulgence to let me know they can see that screen up there now.
We can, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you very much. So as the CAO mentioned, we are dealing with two bills today. We'll, we'll deal with Bill 5 first. And as he noted, Bill 5 was introduced on April 17th, 2025 to the legislature. The comments on Bill 5 were unfortunately due by this past Saturday, May 17th. So as Randy noted, we didn't get the chance to, to comment on it. And Bill 5, like a lot of other pieces of provincial legislation we've seen, is proposing to amend a number of pieces of legislation and also create a new piece of legislation called the Special Economic Zones Act. And I will say, in both prepping the summary for Bill 5 and prepping the summary for Bill 17, this really was a team effort, and there were certainly many county staff that contributed here, but also your own municipal staff. I was getting emails from individual councillors saying, hey, did you see this presentation? This is really useful links. A few law firms had provided summaries of the documents. So we've tried to pull together as much as we can in a relatively short timeframe. But I would like to thank everybody that contributed to the summary, because it really is a big job going through a large piece of legislation such as this. So with respect to that, we'll just provide some, some brief highlights. So as I said, Bill 5 would create a new act called Special Economic Zones. So this is yet another planning acronym that we're going to have to learn. We'll call them SEZs. And Special Economic Zones would be areas that could be designated by the province, geographic areas, wherein trusted proponents or designated designated projects could be exempt from both provincial legislation and municipal bylaws if they were to develop in those zones. A lot of these details, including definitions for trusted proponents and designated projects, would come through future regulations. The province has noted these regulations would be developed by September 2025. But unfortunately, we don't know all the details of that yet. Furthermore, we don't know the details, including the criteria that would go into what constitutes a special economic zone, or how, how the province would designate such. There's been some speculation in the planning and legal fields as to where that could be. And, and you know, quite frankly, Gray County might be the top on, might not be the top on the list to, to have some special economic zones. But we thought it was important to, to profile this to Committee of the Whole, nonetheless. One of the other things that we'd certainly love to see detail on either prior to the legislation being passed or through those regulations is how municipalities would be consulted on approvals of a special economic zone or development within a special economic zone, particularly when municipal bylaws might not apply. Knowing that most development in Ontario is supported by municipal infrastructure, whether that be at the member municipal level or the county level, it will be important for, for municipalities to be key parties at the table here. Furthermore, the relationship between special economic zones and minister zoning orders is not 100% clear at this time. One of the other changes being proposed through Bill 5 is to repeal the Endangered Species Act and replace it with a new Species Conservation Act. There'd be a number of changes that would go into this new Species Conservation Act, including reducing the definition of habitat for endangered or threatened species, such that it does not include all aspects of a species's life cycle or all the lands they need for survival in that regard. The minister would also be given the, the ability to both add or remove species from the list. And there would still be the committee that, that assesses the species, but it would be up to the minister as to whether or not species are added or removed from the list. They'd be changing the framework for, for approving authorizations within endangered species or threatened species habitat. And it would largely become more proponent-driven and, and self-registration in that regard, rather than the current system. They're proposing to remove the term harass from the provisions prohibiting harm to such endangered species. And then there's also more of an administrative change to remove migratory birds and aquatic species that are already protected, protected under the Federal Species at Risk Act. There's further changes that would help recognize indigenous traditional knowledge as part of the criteria in identifying and evaluating such species. I will say, and for those that have been following the, the media coverage on, on this piece of legislation, the changes to the former, or what might be the former Endangered Species Act and replaced by the Special Species Conservation Act seem to be some of those ones that, that have, have generated the most public discussion. And there's certainly some concern with respect to the changes and potentially the weakening of protections for, for endangered and threatened species in that regard. There's also a number of changes being proposed to the Ontario Heritage Act. It would give the province the ability, in some cases, to waive the requirement for an archaeological assessment as part of certain projects in that regard. Again, there'll be a criteria established through a future regulation, but we don't know what those criteria would be just yet. That would also give the minister the ability to, to direct properties that, that do need an archaeological assessment, whether that be on land or on lands that are underwater. And it would provide the, the minister the ability to, to direct where artifacts or archaeological collections are to be deposited, whether that be with public institutions or indigenous communities. And so as I said, there's a number of other changes being proposed to, to various pieces of legislation. There's some, some targeted changes with respect to a landfill in southern Ontario and environmental assessment requirements. There's some changes with respect to Ontario place. But staff have tried to highlight just those that are perhaps most pertinent to Gray County in that regard. And so with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And if I could bear your indulgence, Madam Warden, I'd just like to turn it over to either the CAO or Deputy CAO, just to see if they have any further questions or further comments before we open it up to questions from Committee of the Whole.
Okay, so I'm getting a shake of the head beside me that we're ready for questions. So thank you very much. And with that, then I'll put it out for, oh, yes, we've got it moved and seconded on the floor. So I'll put it out to Committee of the Whole members for any questions or comments. And we are considering to receive it for information. So we'll go to Councillor Eccles, and I'm, I'm switching my microphone off, Councillor Eccles, to give you the opportunity to speak.
Not so much about you switching it off, it's cutting me off, so that I get a little, you know, more concerned about Madam Warden, thank you. Yeah, this bill, you know, disturbs on a personal basis disparagement even more than the strong mares of act that come flying at us as well, too. Two terms in this that really concern me are trusted proponents. That will be determined somewhere down the line of whom? Well, what, what's the definition of a trusted proponent? I've got, in my own assumption, what it, what it is meaning. And, but as they said, that'll be somewhere down the line and, you know, with whose consultation or designation. But the other one is, is, you know, and it comes under the endangered species or the Ontario Heritage part of it and whatnot. Provide the minister with the ability to direct that a property be inspected to assess whether artifacts, archaeological sites. That's an interesting way of saying that, because for most of the planning that we have in Ontario right at the present moment, you must, or you shall, looking at Mr. CEO and his planning background, you shall do an archaeological site or an, you know, for artifacts and whatnot. But this one, the way that's written, the minister will decide, that's what I'm reading and how it will be done, that the property be inspected. But I think it's taken it right out of there, which is, you know, and the minister will provide where the artifacts, if anything, is found. Well, that's pretty redundant, because we're not even doing it. You know, I'm not going to order anybody to do that, my trusted proponents, to do any of these archaeological studies. I'm very critical of red tape, for sure, but man, this is worse, in my mind, this is worse than throwing the baby out with bathwater. You can cut me off now, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Eccles, and did I see Councillor De Breen?
Thank you, and I too have concern with some of the recommendations in how it affects our duty to consult. If the minister, to my, to Councillor Eccles, if the minister can decide what, if anything, is conducted, I thought our duty to consult was to circulate applications and proposals to our indigenous parties and, you know, allow them to decide what archaeological studies are required or where those artifacts would, would remain if found. Yeah, I have a lot of concerns about Bill 5, as Mr. Taylor has his hand up, so as, as, as many people that I've spoken to have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll go to Director Taylor.
Great, thank you, Madam Warden, through you, and, and back to Councillor Eccles and Councillor De Breen. Certainly, the, some of the archaeological, archaeological changes are, are generating a significant amount of concern. And I should have mentioned that in, in preparing this quick summary, staff didn't have the, the ability to, to chat with some of the indigenous communities that have traditional territory within, within Gray County. Our understanding is staff from Bruce County did have the ability to chat with Sauk Injibwe Nation staff. And certainly I've seen some online summaries to suggest that a number of First Nations and Métis communities are very concerned about, about Bill 5 in this regard. I will say more directly to Councillor Eccles' comments, we're also currently working on, the county's working on our archaeological management plan. We've had the benefit of receiving some, some comments from our archaeologists that's, that's preparing that plan for us with their summary and their potential concerns with, with Bill 5 in that regard. As it would stand today, Bill 5 wouldn't necessarily change the provincial planning statement or the, the county official plan in that regard. So archaeological studies would still be required unless explicitly, I guess, waived by the province in that regard.
Okay, thank you. I'll just look around the room if there are any questions or comments, Councillor Gray.
The only thing I would note here, this is extremely challenging, I guess, to walk the, the correct line. I recalled reading an article last year, and I think it was a Baden or a Tavistock area farmer. It was, it got quite a bit of media attention. As the headline shows, he has to pay $400,000 in archaeological fees to build a home on his field. Said he was told by the Ontario government that until the dig is complete, he could face fines or even jail time for stepping out onto his field. There are components to legislation perhaps in place now that at, on face value such as that, look extreme and potentially like a egregious government overreach. And even if it's, if it is the right thing to do, potentially then what the government has to do is, if it's that important, the government supports people and the government pays the cost. But to burden property owners or homeowners with some of, or landowners with some, with costs like that is, I, I, it does merit consideration in terms of the whole conversation we're having here, because we want to protect everything we can. At the same time, you see headlines like that, and you're like, oh, boy. What kind of a reexamination do we need to, to do? And I'm glad we're undertaking the project at the county level. But that's part of, you know, a headline like that should be something that stays with us and, in trying to find that correct balance as a municipality in determining what the, the best plan and management plan is that, that we come up with down the road.
Thank you, looking around the room, not seeing any, oh, there we go, Councillor Keveney.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and Bill 5 is very, very concerning for us in particular. And I think about our official plans, both at the county and our own municipal level, that certainly reflect a priority of protecting, protecting our environment. And I'm wondering about any implications Bill 5 would have on our official plans, because we have our trusted proponent in TC Energy ready to start through impact assessments. And I'm very concerned about what the implications of this are in that process going forward. So my question is in relation to our official plans and whether this has any impact on the language within those that needs to be reconsidered.
Okay, I'll look to Director Taylor.
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden, thank you for your question, Councillor Keveney. So Bill 5 in and of itself has the potential to change provincial legislation. At this stage, it's, it's not necessarily changing the provincial planning statement or, or county or municipal official plans in that regard. So certainly, you know, the county official plan slots in under provincial legislation, like the Planning Act or like the Endangered Species Act. So if there was changes to, to provincial legislation, then, then certainly our county plan would, would, would recognize those changes. But at this stage, it wouldn't necessarily have an immediate impact in terms of, you know, the types of environmental studies we would see or the types of archaeological studies we'd see, unless the province established one of those special economic zones and, and, you know, waived municipal requirements in that regard. Certainly, if Bill 5 passed, the province could choose to update further documents, including the provincial planning statement, or, or look at municipal official plan updates. But that, that's, that's not part of the current suite of, of legislation at this stage.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Councillor Kentner.
Thank you, and through you, Warden Matrasovs. I, I think, you know, it's, it's just something we've seen over and over again. It's, it's the proverbial pendulum always swinging too far. And we're in a time when it's important that we curb some of the excesses of regulation. But the Ford government seems to always have an excessive response, and, and this one is pretty chilling. So I think that's just, I, I don't know how we cope with it, but we have to.
Okay, thank you. And I do not see any further, oh, Councillor Eccles, second pass?
Yes, thank you. You know, I, from doing some reading and whatnot and information coming forward, you know, critical minerals and energy sector, this seemed to be more directed to northern Ontario and the development of the Ring of Fire when we start talking about critical minerals. But again, there's no definition that I found in this bill of what a critical mineral is. And Gray County sitting on 60% of what could be considered a critical mineral in the economic boom of Ontario, it's our aggregate resource. And if anybody has gone through what a gravel pit application or an aggregate extraction, what is required in that? I just, and to your point, Mr. Kentner, Councillor Kentner, are we swinging way over here that gravel pits will be opened up immensely as the continuant building? But maybe it won't need to be that, because as we dig under the 401 to tunnel that, there'll be aggregate, we'll probably be coming north, we'll have to find someplace to get rid of it. So maybe my concern is not merited in that fashion. But I think this is going to have a big effect on the environment, on the economic development of Gray County going forward.
Thank you, Councillor Eccles, I'll go to Director Taylor, who's raised his hand.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to Councillor Eccles. I would just say to Councillor Eccles' comments, at this stage, Bill 5 isn't proposing to change the Aggregates Resources Act, which is where we see the pits and quarries that are licensed in, in Gray County licensed under. They are, however, proposing to change the Mining Act in that regard. So certainly there's, there's, there could be further changes in the future to the Aggregates Resources Act, or how, how that Aggregates Resources Act would interact with a special economic zone. I'm not certain, but I did just want to make it clear that at this stage, the Aggregates Resources Act isn't proposed to, to be amended.
Okay, thank you. And I no longer see any hands. All right, so we've got this first motion on the floor to receive for information, all those in favor? And that motion is carried, thank you. The next one that we have is item 7E. It's recommended that the correspondence regarding Bill 7- It's recommended that the correspondence regarding Bill 17, Protect Ontario by Building Faster and Smarter, the SMART Act 2025 be received and that staff provide comments on the proposed legislation prior to June, the June 11th, 2025 deadline. May ask for a mover. Moved by the Deputy Warden and seconded by Councillor Carlton. It's now on the floor for discussion. So shall I return to this CEO Schertz or directly to, okay, directly to Director Taylor?
Great, thanks again, Madam Warden. I will share my screen one last time here.
We can see it.
Okay, great, thanks so much. So Bill 17 is, is hot off the presses, if you will. It was introduced on, on May the 12th, 2025. As the CEO mentioned with his preface and comments, it is a tight turnaround in terms of the commenting deadline. Staff, we're not able to prepare a report for this meeting and, and the consultation ends on the majority of the pieces of legislative changes on June 11th. So the day before our next committee of the whole meeting. As such, through the motion, what we're looking to do is to submit some staff comments, but we'll certainly give you a summary here today and, and take down any comments that council might have. I should further note, in the spirit of collaboration, we are pulling together a meeting of all the municipal planners tomorrow afternoon to get, to get municipal planning thoughts on Bill 17. And, and certainly we'll be liaising with a number of other departments, definitely in the county as well, because it goes far beyond just planning changes in that regard. So you can see how the list on the screen is in terms of the number of acts that it, that it amends. Today, we're going to be focusing largely on the Development Charges Act and, and the Planning Act. But there are certainly another, number of other pieces of legislation in that regard. With respect to the Development Charges Act, Bill 17 is, is proposing to make it such that long-term care homes are no longer subject to development charges. They're proposing to offer greater flexibility in that the payment of a development charge could be paid, and, and this is for owned housing, could be paid either at the time that the building permit is taken out, which is generally the standard rate now, or it could be deferred until occupancy. And, and while on paper that definitely provides some greater flexibility to those that would be paying development charges, staff would note it, it could be administratively burdensome on, on municipalities that are collecting those development charges and/or tracking when they're due in that regard. There's a number of changes proposed through Bill 17 that would allow the province greater regulation-making authority. In this case, there would be authority to, to better define a local service. They would, there would be a regulation-making authority to merge service categories for the purposes of receiving development charges credits. So this is really getting down into the weeds of development charges. But essentially, developers could, could receive a broader range of development charges credits, perhaps where, where their front-ending has certain improvements in that regard. It would also allow municipalities a simplified process to updating their development charges bylaws in certain circumstances, particularly if a municipality was looking to reduce its development charges. And it's further making charges, making changes, proposed changes to, to the current freeze period to ensure that the developer pays the lower of the development charges rate. So they would either pay the development charge that was in effect at the date when, when the freeze period ended and they had to pay it, or if at that time the, the rate is lower, then they would pay the, the lower of the two. Sorry about that, bit confusing. I will say in this regard, we also had the ability to, to talk to Hempson, who is the firm that has prepared the, the county's last couple development charges bylaws and, and really one of the leaders in the province in that regard. And, and similar to, to county staff's thoughts, you know, some of these changes might be positive. There's some that sort of we'll need to see further detail on in terms of those regulation-making authorities and, and some where, where the, the potential positive or negative impacts might be unknown at this stage. That said, you know, maybe beyond the, the occupancy tracking, staff don't have, have major concerns at a preliminary level, but I will say we need to chat further with, with our finance folks and, and with municipalities to fully understand the realm of the changes in this regard. There are a number of proposed changes to the Planning Act and associated regulations. One of those would be that the province would have further ability to limit what gets submitted, submitted with a complete application for a Planning Act application. The province is proposing to remove certain studies such as wind, sun and shadow, urban design or lighting studies from the complete application requirements. They're also making it clear that any study that municipality asks for has to be clearly laid out in its official plan in that regard. They are providing potentially greater certainty that reports by specified professionals or certified professionals, sorry, should be accepted by municipalities. So certainly, staff see, see sort of both sides of the coin on this one. We, we were lucky enough to deal with a, a number of very skilled and, and trusted consultants in our area. But certainly even looking at our own transportation engineers, when they review a proponent's transportation impact study, they might have a different professional opinion than, than the author that's prepared it on behalf of that proponent. There's some new requirements that would allow for minor variances, if you like, as of right, where they're varying a proposal within 10% of the existing requirements. It would give the Ministry of the Municipal, Ministry of the Municipal Affairs and Housing the ability to impose conditions on a minister's zoning order. And then there'd be potentially proposed streamlining of approvals for new publicly funded kindergarten to grade 12 schools in that portables, newly added portables to a site, to a site would be exempted from site time control requirements. With respect to some of the other changes, the ministry would consult on changes to streamlining county and municipal official plans in that regard to look at simplified and standardized official plan designations. Certainly, there's always room for us all to improve and, and on paper, that, that could be beneficial. That said, staff would, would just hope that it's, it's sort of not a one-size-fits-all for the entire province because certainly the, the development that we see in Gray County is very different than the development you might see in, in Toronto or Ottawa in that regard. There's some further changes being considered with respect to the Ministry of Finance population projections. And there, there might be a change which would say municipalities in, in updating their official plans would use the higher of either the Ministry of Finance numbers or current municipal population projections if they're higher than the ministry's numbers in that regard. This is something that, that could impact certain municipalities more than others, but certainly as, as the county is preparing our update to the growth management study, it's something we're, we're trying to stay keenly in tune with in that regard. And then finally, there's the proposed changes that would allow the minister to exempt provincial decisions from provincial policy on a case-by-case basis where the ministry is the, the approval authority. So in Gray County, just as, as an example, if Gray were to pass a new official plan or, or a five- or 10-year review of our county official plan, those types of, of decisions would be approved by the ministry in that regard. This is another one where we don't have the details yet on, on what would qualify for such an exemption whereby the minister is exempting that approval from provincial policy in that regard. But they've noted that a further framework would be developed and, and there would be transparency in that framework. With respect to some of the other changes, they are proposing, looking at some further standardisation of municipal data tracking as it pertains to planning, building code and permit applications, and hopefully to, to use emerging technology to help improve and streamline those processes. They've noted potentially the use of, of artificial intelligence technology there. There's some further changes proposed to the building and fire codes to, to look at potentially more flexibility for permitting four-story townhouse units. They're consulting and, and this is, this is in line with some recent information we've seen from AMO and other organisations on greater flexibility for communal services as it might pertain to private communal water or sewage services in that regard, including modular off-grid water treatment facilities. There's potentially some further changes with respect to exploring a public utility model for water and wastewater infrastructure, including changes to the existing Municipal Services Corporation model, which could include both governance and financial changes. They're looking at reviewing and streamlining some of the Ministry of Transportation's processes in that regard. And, and the Ministry of Transportation would also be consulting on potentially standardising road construction standards across Ontario's 444 municipalities. And, and I apologise, I've, I've not talked to Pat or his transportation group on this one just yet. But certainly some of what we've heard from, from other municipalities is that, you know, there might be room for some standardisation, but, but certainly a one-size-fits-all might not, might not work for, for road construction across the province. And so with that, as, as the warden read out at the beginning, we are looking for, for this information to be received and the direction that, that staff would, would incorporate any of council's comments here today alongside our own staff comments into future comments ahead of that June 11th deadline. And so with that, I will stop sharing my screen and just through you, Madam Warden, turn it back over to either the CAO or deputy if they have any further comments to, to add on this.
Okay, CAO?
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, Scott. Scott's obviously provided a great overview of what's in the proposed bill. As noted, it's, it's hot off the press, so to speak. We're just starting to dig into some of those details. We wanted to bring that to council today to obviously, you know, if you have any initial thoughts or comments, we'll incorporate those into our staff comments. But we'll also have some further discussions with each of your local municipal staff to make sure that we're trying to capture as many of the comments as we can to provide that to the province before the deadline. So appreciate Scott providing that, that overview.
Thank you. Indeed, the timing is very tight when one considers all the various different council cycles. So I think all of our lower tiers are going to be trying to catch up on this very quick digest of a lot of material. So thank you very much, Director Taylor. It's been very helpful, the way that you've been able to, to at least give us some guiding, guiding thoughts on this. And so this, this is the best thing that we can do is to put it out now to see if there are additional comments that come from county council that could be incorporated into the staff comments. So with that, we'll begin with Deputy Warden Mill.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It, it, it just strikes a person that they're almost desperate to meet this target of more houses and they'll do anything or remove any barrier, no matter the cost, to the economy, to the environment, to governance, just to get it done. One can imagine an office in Queen's Park labelled Office that seeks to see stuff stick to the wall, almost. So it, it, there are, as, as Councillor Gregg pointed out, there are some tweaks that, you know, could be helpful. But the manner and the, and the volume of stuff they push out the door to change stuff, why don't they just do it themselves? Just go around the municipalities, leave us alone and just do it themselves. I, I don't know why they, they think we're the problem. We're not the problem. Municipalities are not the problem, yet they persist to think that we are the problem. There are thousands and thousands of new houses approved across the province that the builders are not building, and we can't change that. If the builder doesn't want to put a shovel in the ground, we can't change that, no matter how many turtles were killed. So it, it's really frustrating to see this stuff happen. But I do commend Scott for his report, very, very helpful. And indeed, all of staff for their, for their diligence on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? We'll go to Councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasovs. Just a question regarding their changes to DC rate and, and the, not the rate, the deferral and stuff. Wondering if there's clarity on if the DCs are deferred and the cost of DCs change, whether up or down? Does the price at the time of the building permit pulled gets charged or the new price change? I understand the freeze period is a little different in terms of when we, we implement a new development charge assessment. But I'm just wondering if there's clarity on to how that would work out?
Director Taylor?
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden. Thanks for your question, Councillor Nielsen. It's certainly something we want to look into. I, I, I'm hesitant to give you a definitive answer here. We do want to look into exactly what rate it is and, and if a charge is deferred in that regard, whether or not the municipality would, would have the ability to, to charge interest. Certainly with respect to the freeze period, I, I believe they've made it clear that, that you would pay the lower of either the rate it was frozen at or the current rate. But with respect to those deferrals, we just want to dig in further. And I certainly don't want to speak for Mary Lou or any of her team or the team at the municipalities in that regard. So, so if, if we could, I, I think I'd like to get back to you on that unless there's any further information from Mary Lou or Randy or now.
We have a follow-up?
Just another comment regarding the changes. And I guess our opportunity here is to kind of give Scott anything we think we need clarity on in the future. So that's one for me. And two is the changing the need to use of the Ministry of Finance population numbers. The irony to me is that I think Gray County looked at those numbers and said, we thought they were a little low. And then they're saying, well, you could use either or. And so then I kind of sit here and say, well, what's the point of putting out and saying you have to use or could, could use the Ministry of Finance? We have already done the work. We're currently doing our new growth assessment. And we received a report recently, and we're doing this work again. And so I think this is an opportunity where we could just kind of say to the province, maybe you just leave this one in our hands and let us do the growth projections as to where and, and how the growth we think is going to happen within Gray County.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, we'll go to Councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thanks, Scott, for the additional information. Do you have any idea, and I forget the exact terminology, but off-the-grid mobile treatment? What that would look like or what that entails? I'm not really familiar with what you're talking about there. I know if, if the, I guess, yeah, that's my question. What is that? Thank you.
Director Taylor?
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your question, Councillor Mackey. I, I, I don't know entirely what that entails. I know through discussions at Western Ontario Wardens and with AMO, there's an interest in exploring further communal servicing technologies across the province. I don't, I don't specifically know what off-grid is. It's something we'd like to dig further into and, and maybe chat with municipal operations staff on. I think particularly given the cost of new and expanded municipal wastewater and water treatment systems, the province is interested in exploring whether or not there's, there's smaller scale options that could be delivered at the communal level that might help unlock certain lands which aren't currently serviced for development in that regard. One of the key considerations, and this is really getting into the, the minutia of, of provincial policy and, and regulations in that regard, is currently where somebody is proposing a communal system, often one of the major barriers to those systems is the need to enter into a responsibility agreement with the host municipality. So that agreement would essentially say if, if this system were to fail or, or if this developer were, were to abandon the system, the municipality would, would be on the hook, so to speak, for, for assuming that system. And, and what that means in practicality is at least many municipalities I've dealt with have said, well, listen, we're not willing to sign that responsibility agreement unless you build it to a municipal standard. But building it to a municipal standard is far too costly. So it just kind of creates this vicious cycle of, of, of lands remaining unserviced because, because of the cost and responsibilities. So certainly through groups like Western Ontario Wardens and AMO and, and these new provincial changes, we'd like to dig further into sort of what technologies are out there and, and then what the corresponding impact, both positive and negative, would be on municipalities. I apologise, that's a very long-winded answer, but yeah.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Councillor Keating.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and I just wanted to add to the Deputy Warden's comments. In, in my mind, the holdups really are MTO and Ontario Hydro. I mean, we understand, all of us, the need for infrastructure, but there's nothing in Bill Five or Bill 17 that would make any difference to those two factions that really do hold up development.
Thank you. And any other comments? Councillor Gregg?
I guess my question, this is a question really to enlighten me. From the county's perspective, what do we ask for when it, the first bullet point is provide authority, limit municipal complete application studies, removing wind, sun, shadow, urban design? I'm aware of our asks or requests at the lower-tier municipality, but I'm not wanting to wear that opinion right now. So I'm wondering, what do we ask at this level in terms of those studies? Because I'm of the opinion there's room for improvement at the lower tier. But where are we at, at Gray County?
Director Taylor?
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your question, Councillor Gregg. The answer is that it really depends on, on the type of application coming forward. So certainly if we're looking at new residential plan of subdivision versus a gravel pit, there's different, different study requirements. That said, if, if, if we're looking at plans of subdivision at the county level, we're not asking for wind studies, we're not asking for sun and shadow studies. We don't particularly ask for urban design studies in that regard. Those aren't firm requirements of the county official plan. The only time I think we've ever seen a wind study, for example, would, would have been years ago when, when we were looking at the sighting of, of large-scale industrial wind turbines in that regard. So strictly speaking, those specific studies that they've listed in the proposed regulation changes wouldn't appear to, to impact. wouldn't appear to to impact the county very greatly. If the province is going to add to that list, it could. Certainly, there are some municipalities in Gray County that have been looking at further exploring urban design guidelines. So that might be something that would would impact some of our member municipalities. But in terms of those that are listed, it wouldn't directly impact what we ask for at the county. Even as I said, on on other applications like gravel pits, again, we're not asking for wind or sun shadow or or any of the studies that they've listed there. Thank you.
Follow up?
Okay, thank you for that response. And a little more information on bullet point four, give the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing the authority to impose conditions on a use permitted by a minister's zoning order. MZO's have been in place now for quite a few years. In the professional realm, has are there items that have been identified where MZO's have been issued? And this is coming from, because when you read that, the authority to impose conditions, so a new application on something that's been existing for a few years, but there's no background to. MZO's gave a lot of freedom. Is the province seeing something that they still wanted more freedom beyond the initial MZO granting?
Okay, we're going to look to the CAO for that one.
I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Scott if he has anything further to add there. So I think in terms of what we've seen in terms of minister zoning orders, they they vary in terms of of their complexity. Essentially, what they do is they they replace what's on anything within municipal zoning bylaws and and put put in place that whatever's going to be permitted on on that particular site or property. So in terms of the details as it relates to this, I haven't dug into those in in full detail. But I think looking at what typically is is in terms of what conditions are imposed as a as a part of those zoning. Right now, municipalities don't have the ability to put conditions on on zoning bylaws. So I don't know if this is something that they would like to see is to the ability for the minister to add some conditions as it relates to MZO's in terms of specific developments. I'm assuming as someone has popped up where they require some sort of conditions to be added just to provide further direction and details, but I'll turn it over to Scott. Maybe he has some further information there.
Yeah, thank you, Randy, and through you, Madam Warden. Yeah, we're not entirely sure at this stage. One of the the questions that we'd like to put forward to the province is is whether or not these changes would be on a go forward basis. So for any new MZO's being proposed or whether the province would be retroactively applying conditions to some of those existing MZO's that are in place. Certainly, there's been some pushback at the provincial level with respect to some of the the current MZO's where, you know, there was a rush to approve a development in the province and then the developer is now not building. So there's been some speculation that there might be further conditions on, you know, timing or or sort of a use it or lose it, if you will. There's also been some concerns at the provincial level with respect to indigenous consultation. So perhaps there could be more conditions imposed there, but I am purely speculating here. So this is something that we'd certainly like more more information on at the provincial level.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not seen any further comments then, and we did have the motion moved and seconded. So we've had a good folsom discussion that will help populate what you are able to compose, Director Taylor, and add them to the comments that your staff continues to come up with as you dig deeper into it with a little bit more time between now and June 11. Okay, so with that, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, we are past quarter after 12. We are going to break for lunch. And then, Madam Clerk, if we come back at 1 o'clock, is that suitable? Okay, so at 1 o'clock, we'll have to continue. We have both a closed session matter and one more open session matter. So we will need to take the time to do that after 1 o'clock. Thank you very much. We have regathered. Thank you very much, everyone. We have taken our break and we have come back to continue with the items on the list. The next one is item eight, which is a closed session matter. So it's recommended that the committee, the whole, does now go into closed session pursuant to Act Two, Section 239.2 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended to discuss a potential land disposition. Number one, see a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And number two, item K, a position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by on or by by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Okay, so I've got a move by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor McKay. Any discussion about going into closed session? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. So we'll take a moment to adjust the number of people in the room and the recording. Thank you very much. So we've come out of closed session and I can report that we only discussed the matters for which we moved into closed session. But we do have a motion for consideration that needs to be out in open session. And that motion is recommended that the county of Gray option back to the 1.77 hectare parcel directly south of Gray Gables property from Bright Shores, as per the 2020 Markdale Hospital Land Transfer Agreement, and that staff negotiate an agreement with Gray Highlands that would commit to selling a portion of the subject lands to Gray Highlands. May ask for a mover. Move by Counselor Dobrine and seconded by Counselor Mackey. And this is now on the floor for discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone. We just have one more item on our agenda under other business. We wanted to take a moment, as we're all doing in our lower tier municipalities as well, to discuss delegation requests as we are going to have the upcoming 2025 Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference in August. The deadline is coming up in terms of who we might wish to present delegations to various ministries. So with that, I will look to CAO Schurtzer.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov. So last week, senior management team met and started to talk about potential AMO delegation topics that we would recommend bringing forward to AMO for council's consideration. Staff have put together four kind of delegation topics overall. The first would be to the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade. Request for continued and permanent funding for small business enterprise centers beyond March 31, 2026, which is the current funding agreement expiry date. So we would recommend a delegation to encourage the the ministry to extend and continue that funding beyond March 31, 2026. The second topic is around to the Ministry of Colleges, Universities, Research Excellence and Security, requesting that sustainable funding and investment into rural community colleges, specifically to our to our region, the Owensound Georgian College campus, and how vital that campus is in the future to our region. That's pending further discussion with Georgian College and meeting with President Weaver tomorrow to to discuss this further, but we think this is an important topic, given some of the changes we've seen with college campuses across across Ontario. The second potential topic for council's consideration is with both the Ministry of Health and Ministry of Long Term Care. A request for continued and permanent funding for the Community Paramedicine Program, including the Community Paramedicine Program for Long Term Care beyond March 31, 2026, which again is when we're the current funding expires for that, as well as a request to simplify the funding and reporting to just one ministry. Right now, we've received funding from both ministries for those programs and we we also have to report to both those ministries. So if we can simplify and just to have the funding come from one ministry and report to one ministry, that would save some staff some significant time. In addition, a request for the overall funding for paramedic services to be adjusted to include inflationary increases annually, because the the funding envelope has not kept pace with with some of the inflationary pressures that we've seen over the years. So that's the third topic. The the last topic that staff are recommending bring forward is to the Ministry of Long Term Care. And this is a couple of requests. A request that the long term care redevelopment projects that are already underway be eligible for the new funding model that was announced as part of the 2025 provincial budget. Also requesting that clarity provided regarding the specific requirements of the legislation for both vulnerable sector checks, as well as assisting operators with navigating the changes requiring any PSW that's certified before July 1, 2024 to be registered with Hiscapoa by December 1, 2027 or to Upskill. So we want to seek clarity and and help to navigate some of those legislative changes because this could have a significant impact on our on our workforce and in our operations of our long term care if those changes are interpreted a certain way. So those are the four topics that seniors manager team have developed to for council's consideration. Also want to note to council that I'll be meeting with a local CEO group tomorrow morning and discussing any AMO delegation requests, of course, that you've talked about at your local municipal tables. And to note to the CEOs that the county is happy to assist the local municipalities with any of their AMO delegations, whether it's providing data and information to support their briefs or attending the delegations with the local municipalities if they're interested in the county's support. So we'll be discussing that further with with the local CEO group tomorrow. As well, we're obviously open to any further suggestions that council may have in terms of other AMO delegation topics that we should be bringing forward to to various ministries.
Okay, thank you for those details. And of course, we'll never know which ones we get, but we we must decide together as a council what it is that we would like to apply to have our 15 minutes with. So with that, then, that list that was just described is up on the list on the screen. Before I ask for a mover and a seconder, I'll just put the question out. Any further, any questions for CAO Schurtzer before we entertain the motion? Yes, Counselor Greg.
I do just have a question to staff. In the past, we have tried to communicate concerns about Highway 26 and some of the county roads. There's a $38 million injection of more funding for Wasaga Beach right next door to Collingwood. Where are we at corporately in terms of those discussions? And is that something that we should be continuing to try to advocate and meet with the province on?
Thank you for that question, specifically in the Highway 26 corridor area. We've been working with Simcoe County and and working with MTO as well as all the municipalities within the South Georgian Bay area to move forward with what we're calling a regional transportation assessment. Council may recall that as part of the this year's budget, we included what would be our share of that overall regional transportation assessment. Simcoe delegated and we supported that delegation at Roma and and received was received well by the ministry. We're just working now with ministry staff on what the terms of that regional transportation assessment would look like. And we're meeting then with further with the South Georgian Bay area municipalities to further those discussions. So that work is somewhat underway. We don't have the full commitment yet from MTO, but they're receptive to working with us on that and looking at what those terms of that assessment look like.
Thank you. And our request was that we do it three ways, that that they they pitch in that final third and the two counties, the other two thirds. Okay, don't see any of their hands up for questions. So let's entertain a motion then. It's recommended that the following delegation requests be submitted for the AMO conference and the list is there in front of you. I'll just read which ministries, the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, the Ministry of Colleges, Universities, Research Excellence and Security, and the Ministry of Health and Ministry of Long Term Care and the Ministry of Long Term Care for a different issue. May ask for a mover. Thank you. Move by Counselor Nielsen, seconded by Counselor Carleton. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, that motion is carried. Let's keep our fingers crossed. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to item 10. I'll put a call out for any notices of motion. Notice of motion. Not seeing any hands. We'll move on to adjournment then. It's recommended that our committee, the whole, does now adjourn at 1:49 PM. Oh, from whom do I choose? Thank you. Deputy Warden Mill moves it and Counselor Patterson seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone.